Good evening. This meeting of April 14, 2014, of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education is called to order. Our mission is to develop world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. Roll call, please.
Mr. Barton?
Here.
Mr. Bytine?
Here.
Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Prohaska?
Here.
Ms. Ryan?
Here.
Ms. Seagurt?
Here.
Mr. Strillo?
Present. Great, thank you. A special welcome to our group from Sageville Elementary, Jean McDonald, and you'll all come up and remember, you're yelling at the back of the room so we can all hear your names, so please step up to the microphone, introduce yourselves.
Hi, I'm Adam Harveston, and I go to, I'm in fifth grade.
I'm Riley Dupont, and I'm in fifth grade.
I'm Anna Klein, and I am in fourth grade.
Ethan Leahy, and I am in third grade.
Clara Leahy, and I'm in fourth grade.
Kylie Splinter, and I'm in third grade.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
Oh, got to pose. Hang on, gotta get a picture.
What's the lightning bolt for?
Storm.
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 There you go.
Come on.
Thanks for educating me.
I didn't know.
Who else knows that?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good job.
Good job, guys.
Way to go.
Thank you. Oh, yeah. Give it up.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on March 10th and the special meeting on March 17, 2014, as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on March 10th and this special meeting on March 17, 2014, as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Board salutes. Mr. Prohaska.
I have one board salute. I'd like to give a salute out to our music directors and our musicians who participated in the band festival at senior high school on April 3rd. I counted the program, and I've got close to 700 musicians, and it was awesome. The senior high gymnasium was packed, the floor was packed with the fifth, sixth grade band, seventh and eighth grade band, and then the combined Hempstead and Senior Band, and they sounded just wonderful. And there was a, the finale was a "God Bless America," and it was done by all the bands together. It was very good. Mr. David Resnick was the guest clinician, and Cheryl Werner was the emcee, and she did a very nice job handling the program. So salute out to the, all the musicians and musical directors in our school district.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Prohaska. Mr. Bytine?
Mr. President, just a couple of board salutes. First and foremost, those, to the members of our community that attended a recent forum on the aquatic center. This was in late March. There's actually another event. I know Mr. Prohaska attended the day session, I attended the evening session. There were a number of folks from across the community attending to provide input and feedback on the idea of an aquatic center that would be a potential resource for the city as well as for the school district. We appreciate all those. And there's another event, if you haven't already attended, and we would love to have you come, on April 22nd, there'll be, once again, a day session from 11:00 to 1:00, and another evening session as well. So it's an opportunity for you to hear about, actually get your feedback on what that potential venue might become. The second board salute I'd like to do is, I recently attended a special education resource fair, was put on by Lori Anderson. Member, district was involved. It was held at the senior gym. It's a resource fair for those in our community that have kids with special needs, and there were a number of services provided that evening. There were some 800, I think, invitations sent out. The attendance was a little underwhelming, but I know the folks that were there got some really good and useful information, so I appreciate the district's support of that event and appreciate the opportunity for these families to hear about resources they may not otherwise know about. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. All right. I've got a couple of quick things. Everybody at the district and everybody in the community that helped put together the STEM festival, I know I saw a couple of my colleagues there, but kept my kids busy for a couple hours on Saturday morning, and job well done to everybody involved. I just think that's a fantastic event. And also, a little shout-out to Lynn Devaney. It seemed the state education audit went very, very well, and Lynn seemed to deserve a lot of the credit for organizing everything, so. Great. Thank you, ma'am. Any other board salutes?
I move that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Anybody in the audience wishing to address the school board at this time? Please step forward to the microphone.
I move that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
I move the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the budget estimate and authorized payment of the legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the budget estimate and authorized payment of the legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald. It's been moved and seconded, discussion, Mr. Kelleher, are you going to present the budget proposal?
Good evening, Board members, and Superintendent Ryan Gans. Tonight, we are asking you to approve the certified budget for the upcoming fiscal year, which is the 14-15 school year. This is something we do each year, and we present to you a certified budget proposal document. Each of you have a copy of that, and this will be on our website this week, as soon as the, we get it posted. I'm going to take you through some of the pages in that certified budget proposal. Included in the proposal is the upcoming aid and levy, or the levy rate for property taxes that we're asking you to approve. So we'll kind of go through several of the pages in the document. In the beginning of the document, I believe it's page two, there's kind of an overview or preview of all the school funding sources that are included in the aid and levy document. So at the top, you see the general fund, and it has the sources of income for the general fund, as well as the expenses that we use the general fund, or the purposes of the general fund, and how we spend them. So as you know, the general fund is 80% salaries and benefits for the district, and includes all staff except for the nutrition fund. And it is funded through property taxes, state aid, and miscellaneous income. Below that, you see our capital projects, which are the sales tax fund and the Pebble Fund. The sales tax fund is what we use, or both funds we use for capital projects and technology initiatives. The one cent is funded by the consumers going out and paying one cent on all their purchases, and then we get that money back to use, again, for capitalization purposes. The Pebble Fund is part of the levy rate, that's funded through property taxes. Underneath that, you will see some other smaller funds that we use, and that is the management fund, which is also part of the levy rate. There's three pieces of the levy, or three funds involved with the levy rate, the general fund, the Pebble Fund, and the management fund. Nutrition Fund and student activity funds are also funds that the district operates, but those are not part of the levy. Those are funded through student activity, through student activity funds, and nutrition is through food sales. The next page I'm having you look at is the instructional support levy, which is part of the general fund. And I just wanted to bring this up, point I wanted to, or talking point tonight is, six years ago, the district asked to increase the levy rate for instructional support from 5% to 10%, and we promised at that time, if the voters approved that, we would not raise the overall levy rate higher than the levy rate at that time, which was $16.88. This is back in the '08-'09 school year. You can see, we've honored that promise to the taxpayers for the next five years. The light blue line was the levy rate at that time. The purple line is the actual levy rate that was approved and used for levying property taxes. So you can see, it was at the same rate, and now it's starting to decline. So for that, we've honored our promise to the taxpayers when we increased that instructional support levy rate from 5% to 10%. So I'm happy to, that it's concluding, and we've made that promise and honored that The next page I want you to look at is the actual spending authority calculation for the year. It's broken in, the top part of this page shows how we calculate that spending authority. It's based on enrollment, supplemental weightings, and special ed weightings to come up with a total per pupil weighting or calculation. We then multiply that by the per pupil cost that the state approves each year that the district, our district is allowed to spend per person. So they take those two, multiply them together, they add in some other variables and factors to come up with our authorized budget for one, for the upcoming fiscal year. Now, our unspent balance is based on that number, plus or minus the carryovers from prior years, so that's how that's determined. So for example, if we were to spend $118 million next year, we would have zero carryover, or zero amount to carry over, add to the current carryover, which is about 15 million. So if we had a $10 million or a $5 million, let's say, surplus or deficit, that 15 million carryover would be adjusted by whatever the end result of this upcoming year will be. How is budget authority funded? That's below, in the below section, underneath that, you see financing the budget authority. You see state aid, property taxes, and miscellaneous income. And there's a new line this year for government, the governor initiated a commercial and industrial state aid piece that they're helping supplement that reduces property taxes for commercial industrial property, and I'll show that later. So the state is picking up that piece that's being reduced by that reduction. So you see, the two numbers match. This is how it's funded, and this is how it's calculated. The next line, or the next page I want to bring to your attention is history over the last 10 years of the levy rate. You can see, back in '04-'05, it was over $14, and then it grew, and then this was, '08-'09, again, was that year where we promised we wouldn't raise it. It maintained the same levy rate for three years, and over the last three years, we've been able to decrease that levy rate because we've had a large enough cash reserve built up in the past that we did not need to do a cash reserve levy, so we've been able to decrease that then, the overall levy rate each of those years. Now, this is a, okay, Craig?
I'm sorry, just, I think a point that is important to our taxpayers is obviously we can control, kind of what we can control.
Correct.
But there are obviously factors, what the state determines to do in terms of our spending authority, what impact that has on our cash reserves, and so on and so forth. And although we've been able to see a decrease, it's not necessarily one that doesn't fluctuate over time, that we do see this kind of ebb and flow. And I think it's important to understand, as proud as we are of the ability to keep that low, that doesn't mean that circumstances won't require us to actually write, raise that level sometime in the future, but we will certainly take every step to avoid that.
Correct. Yes, going forward, we've been eating up a little bit, or some of our cash reserve, so you will see, probably in the future, that levy rate slight, or go up the trend because we will start to, we've been using the cash surplus that we built up, and going forward, we'll probably have to levy some dollars to build that back up. So we try to make it, we try to provide the cash that we need and the levy rates that we need to operate for the year to the best of our ability. We're not, let's say, we're not charging the taxpayers of raising the levy rate higher than what we need to operate.
I think a fair statement is that in years when we can lower it, we will. I mean, it's not probably a permanent.
Decrease.
And some would say you should keep it level, and at the higher level, and have more cash, but we have the dollars we need in cash, and so in years when we can lower it, knowing that in other years we may have to bounce back up, we will save the taxpayers those dollars in the years where it makes sense for us to do that.
Correct. Because the levy rate is always based on that spending authority, and if we need more cash than what the spending authority is generating, that's when we boost up that levy. The next comparison is, we always like to compare ourselves to how are other UENs, and the rates you see on this page are from this current fiscal year for the other UENs because we don't know what they have approved for this year, but we compare that to what our projected rate is, what we're going to ask the taxpayers this year for our levy rate. And you can see, probably five years ago, we were in the middle of the pack, but when we were able to decrease that levy rate, we've actually gone to the bottom of the UENs for an overall levy rate. Again, we don't project that that will continue, but we might as well enjoy it while we can.
Well, and there's no reason to levy cash that you can't spend, right?
Correct.
I think that's the part that most.
Very important part, yeah. We don't levy cash just to have it and sit there.
Right.
Although my guess is, some school districts do that for various reasons.
Some may, but there are still, there's now state law limitations on how much you can have in surplus.
Now, yeah, now there is.
Right? That was enacted a couple of years ago, and I think for that purpose, time, some districts have a little too much cash, so they've done some calculations.
And I reserve, if I'm not mistaken, it's tied to, what, three months of operating budget?
That's what we hope for. The state does their calculation based on your fund balance and your revenues for the year. They compare those two, and if the fund balance gets too high, they don't let you levy cash or anything more. Okay. The final document or page I want to show you tonight is the comparison of the requested levy rate on residential property, the impact of the levy rate on residential property, commercial property, and industrial property. So what we do is, we take the average value of a home, and where this, we get this number is out of the city budget uses this document every year, so we just use the same number, and then we fill in our data for it. So here's the total assessed average value of a home that the city uses, so we use, again, that same number. Then there's a couple of variables that affect that assessed value, and one of the variables is the equalization order, and you can see that stayed the same for this past year, they didn't change it. Then the rollback is a number that also calculates the taxable value, and you can see, they increased the rollback number, which means, that means, when you take your average assessed value times that rollback, that's how much is subject to tax. So when they increase, it makes more of the assessed value subject to tax. So the rollback was increased, come up with the taxable value. Then we take our school rate, or the levy rate we're asking you to approve tonight, and put that into that calculation, and you can see, last year was $14.60, came out to $1,005. This year, despite the rollback increasing and make more of it, more of your assessed value will taxable, our rate, the way it is, because we're lowering it, the total dollar amount that this individual homeowner would pay for school is $992. Compare that to the $1,005 last year. So this tells you that the homeowners are actually paying less in dollars, even though their taxable value went up, for district purposes, for the district levy piece. So now, let's take a look at commercial and industrial property. On, if you remember, earlier I said the governor did an initiative to help lower the tax rate, or the property taxes of commercial industrial property. That's what this rollback number is. You see, .95 compared to 1.0 last year. That .95 was the initiator, the initiative the governor implemented last year. So again, they have a little bit, here for commercial, there's actually, there was an equalization order that was 1.08, which is compared to 1.0. So you see, the average property went up, and then you factor the rollback, which went down, so it's kind of a double factor, which negating, one went up, one went down. But overall, to sum it up, when you put our school rates in, the commercial person, the commercial owner who has the property is paying $5,132 compared to $5,221. So again, they're paying less out of their pocket this year for the school's portion of the levy. The biggest impact is to the industrial property owner. He did not have an equalization order, he just had the rollback, so it declined his taxable value that was, were applying the levy rate. So he's really the big winner, he or she. When we put our lower levy rate in, you see the substantial savings on property taxes for the industrial taxpayer, dropping from $8,700 down to $7,900 for school purposes. So the overall impact for every property tax owner, based on this year's levy rate, is a decrease in taxes. Again, that's, we're taking benefit of the cash reserves that we've built up to do this levy rate, but that doesn't mean we'll be able to sustain that lower rate going forward. Any questions?
Kevin, I think it's a good idea to remind the public and the community also that when they see, like, school construction going on, remodeling, et cetera, a reminder as to where those funds come from, and, you know, that this type of funding is not involve the educational component of the Dubuque Community School District.
The construction.
The construction.
That was back on that page two.
If you go back to your first or second slide.
Right.
We pay for construction on a one-cent sales tax and Pebble Funds.
Right, right.
And those dollars cannot be used for.
Salaries and benefits.
Salaries, benefits, positions, class sizing, that sort of thing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other? Any other questions on that?
I think Kevin's showing off.
We take the good when we can get it.
That's right. That's exactly right. As you should.
One of the things I appreciate, Kevin, is that as citizen questions have ever come up about the budget or the finance formula, you've always been real good about being willing to sit down with people one-on-one or with groups and make sure that they do understand school finance. It is very complex. I'm as comfortable as about anybody with numbers and finance, and three terms on the board, there's, there just are always new things that you learn or that have to sink in as you study this crazy system that is school finance. It's extremely complex, and I think it's great that you're willing to take the time with citizens and citizen groups to explain to them just how the system really works if they ever do have questions, because citizens, they come forward with some great questions, and you've always, and Ron before you, and Joe for decades before Ron, have always been very approachable and very willing to talk about the structure of school finance, which I think is, is a good thing.
Thank you, Tim. We try to be as transparent as possible. We want the taxpayers to know what their dollars are being used for.
And the reality is, that funding formula process changes on a yearly basis at the legislative level. So it really does take a lot of Kevin's time and his staff, Rick, and then obviously do a great job of ensuring.
And so the rollbacks that the governor initiated this year, that was brand new.
Right. Well, and I think it's more than just transparent, it's putting it in common, easy to understand language, as difficult as the topic is, and I think we've come a long ways with what we put on the website to try to help the general public understand at least where those tax dollars are coming from and where they're going. So again, I think you guys have done a great job of improving that as well.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you, Kevin. No other questions? There's a motion on the table. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move the Board of Education open the public hearing to allow public comments.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education open the public hearing to allow public comments. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Now it'll be the time for anybody in the audience to come up and make any public comments relative to the certified budget proposal.
I move the Board of Education close the public hearing and return to regular session.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education close the public hearing and return to regular session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Someday, we're going to have to plant somebody in the audience just to ask Kevin a really hard question.
It's not a bad idea.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the budget estimate for fiscal 2014-2015 as published.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt the budget estimate for fiscal 2014-15 as published. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay. Public hearing on the public improvement project, the elementary school computers lab. You can make the motion. I move that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the elementary school computer labs project and authorized payment of the legal notice publications to the Telegraph Herald.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the elementary school computer labs project and authorized payment of the legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education open the public hearing to allow public comments.
Second. Moved and seconded that the Board of Education open the public hearing to allow public comments. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to make any public comments relative to the elementary school computer lab project?
I move that the Board of Education close the public hearing and return to regular session.
Aye. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education close the public hearing and return to regular session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve a resolution adopting the plan specifications form of contract and estimated total cost of the elementary school computer labs project, whereas on the 13th day of January 2014, plan specifications form of contract and the estimated total costs were initially filed with the Secretary for the construction of certain public improvements described in general as the elementary school computer labs project, and whereas a notice of hearing on the plan specifications form of contract and estimate of total cost for said public improvements was published as required by law. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Dubuque Community School District, Dubuque, Iowa, Section 1, that the said plan specifications form of contract and the estimated total cost for the elementary school computer labs project are hereby approved and adopted as the plan specifications form of contract and estimated total cost for said public improvement as described in the preamble of this resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve a resolution adopting the plan specifications form of contract and estimate of total cost, the elementary school computer labs project, as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Burkhart.
Good evening, everybody. Bids for the elementary school computer lab project were received, opened, and read aloud on March 5, 2014. There were no apparent bid irregularities, and all bids appeared to be complete, competitive, and well-prepared. Those four bid amounts are, from Porson Construction, a base bid of $212,500; Tricon General Construction, $188,000; Cloud Development Corporation, $193,713; and Westfall &amp; Company, $197,325. You should find a letter in your board packet from Straka Johnson recommending that the school district deceptively base bid of Tricon General Construction in the amount of $188,000 and enter to enter into a contract with Tricon Construction, and Billings &amp; Grounds concurs with that recommendation. If you choose to go forward with that, we will be back in a month advising you that the contract bonds and insurance and everything are in order, and look forward to making a recommendation to move forward with the project, which would start on June 10.
So what was the projected cost?
The projected cost on that was $225,000. The projected cost on that was $225,000.
So we're very happy with the bid of 188,000.
That's great.
Any other questions?
I move the Board of Education approve a resolution making award of the construction contract, be it resolved by the Board of Education, Dubuque Community School District, Dubuque, Iowa, Section 1, that the following bid for the elementary school computer labs project described in the plans and specifications heretofore adopted by this board is accepted. The same being the lowest responsive, responsible bid received for such work as follows. Contractor, Tricon Construction Group of Dubuque, Iowa, amount of bid, $188,000. Section 2, that the President and Secretary are hereby directed to execute a contract with the contractor for the construction of the public improvements, such contract not to be binding on the district until approved by this board.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve a resolution making award of the construction contract as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Just a quick comment on that, too. You know, as the conversation was at Support Services, there's still a building or two where they have to hammer out the exact final decision, and we're open to the change order process if something has to be tweaked at the 11th.
Absolutely. Change orders are always possible. I mean, I guess, to jump in here, I'm just thrilled that we're at this point. If you think of where we've come in a year and a half, with first the wireless, the devices, mobile devices at the secondary level, this will bring to 59, if I have the right number, of labs that have been either new or revitalized in the district. So we really are getting to that point. We'll add another 1,200 laptops next year, which I know we're gonna talk about in a few minutes, I don't wanna steal your thunder, Colby, but I'm just really proud of where we're at and the progress we're making. I think we're getting to that point where good technology, great teachers, you know, unlimited potential for our kids, and so it's a significant commitment of dollars by the Board, by the district. I've been amazed that almost all of our projects come in under projected budget, which is obviously a very good thing for us, but I'm very happy to be at this point and looking toward another summer of good, solid construction work for the betterment of our students and staff. That's my commercial.
Love hearing that commercial.
Thank you very much.
I move the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda. Is there anybody that has anything that they'd like to have pulled from the consent agenda for further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Barton.
Okay.
Are y'all gonna need a drink of water or anything?
I'm ready to roll here.
Facilities and Support Services Committee report.
This is the major report keeping us from closing the meeting, so there's a few things after this, but I'll go as fast as I can. We had goods, we have a lot of good things going on. I move that the Board of Education approve the donation from Two by Two for a concrete bench to be placed on the Bryant Elementary School campus.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the donation from Two by Two for a concrete bench to be placed on the Bryant Elementary School campus. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education approve the increased procurement card corporate limit to $2 million.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the increased procurement card corporate limit to $2 million. You wanna give any, I know that that...
Comment.
You wanna provide a comment there, Kevin, just so everybody understands what we're
The district currently has P cards for administrators and managers and some of the teachers to go out and purchase things, and the credit limit we have originally, when we set up P cards about eight years ago, was $250,000. With the amount of P cards we have out there, the spending limits on those P cards actually add up to about a half million, but we also wanna increase it for the potential of buying, when Kobe comes to present you the laptop purchase, we can start using our P card for that purchase, and by increasing those expenditures, we get a little bit of a rebate on the total dollars spent. So we need to increase that corporate limit in order to make those large purchases. That's why the request is tonight.
Kevin, when people hear about the cards, they think, like their own cards, these obviously carry interest if balances are carried over. Do you wanna address that issue? Is the trade-off between the monies that are ceded back versus the interest that might be paid any over carryover?
Our processes, there is no carryover.
I just, I wanna make that clear.
Okay. Our P cards, we pay on a monthly basis, and the full balance is paid on a monthly basis, so we are not charged any interest on the use of those cards. We do get a little rebate for using the card purchases from the program originator.
And with some significant purchase coming up, like the laptops, if we can, you know, put it on a card and get a rebate, we can, you know, see $10,000 or so.
$10,000 worth of rebate, just from that one large purchase.
I just didn't want anybody thinking we were racking up...
Right. To rack it up. Two million.
Not that anybody here will do that.
How many of those P cards do we have?
Total out of the district, it would be in the neighborhood of 90 to 100 P cards that are in process.
And those are basically in the buildings?
Again, administrators, secretaries, principals, department heads, all have them. And then if a principal decides that they have a teacher that is in charge of a club that has a lot of purchases, they may authorize that teacher to have one.
And it's important to understand that technology is evolving in this to where you can actually create limitations on where those P cards are used, even what days, dollar amount, you can put limits on it, so there's a lot of central management of those cards. Even though there appears to be a lot out in the field, they're very easy to manage in real time.
And when those individuals take the P card, they have to sign a document that they will only use it for school purposes, and then there's some ramifications if they don't.
It's monitored pretty closely.
Just as closely as the purchase orders would be. It's just much, it expedites building and grounds if they need a plumbing part, or expedites a club to get things done a lot, much more quickly. It's just as accountable.
If the club performing the play needs to run out that night and buy something, they can use a P card rather than waiting for that PO process to take place.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Kevin.
All right. Motion on the table, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the following resolution for final acceptance and closing final project costs for the public improvement contract with Ports and Construction. Whereas on March 11, 2013, Dubuque Community School District entered into a construction contract with Ports and Construction of Dubuque, Iowa, contractor for the construction of certain public improvements generally described as the Sageville Elementary School Air Conditioning Mechanical Project. And whereas on November 12, 2012, Dubuque Community School District entered into a contract with MEP engineers, architect, for architectural engineering design services associated with the above project. And whereas on March 4, 2014, architect filed a certificate with Dubuque Community School District certifying that the contractor had substantially completed the construction of said public improvements in accordance with the terms and conditions of the contract and plans and specifications. Whereas the architect has now submitted subsequent report, change order, bonds, and pay application to Dubuque Community School District recommending that the project be accepted by the district as finally complete. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Dubuque Community School District, Section 1, that said reports and documents of the architect are hereby approved and adopted. Section 2, that said public improvement is hereby approved and accepted as having been fully completed in accordance with said plan specifications in form of contract. Section 3, that the total contract cost of the improvement yet payable under said contract with Ports and Construction is hereby determined to be $32,590.51. Section 4, that $32,590.51 of the total contract cost yet paid should be retained for a period of 30 days following this board's action to finally accept this public improvement project pursuant to the requirements of Iowa Code 573.14. If at the end of the 30-day period, claims are on file as provided by the Dubuque Community School District, shall continue to retain from the unpaid funds a sum equal to double the total amount of all claims on file. The remaining balance of the unpaid fund, or if no claims are on file, the entire unpaid fund shall be released and paid to the contractor in accordance with Iowa law.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt the resolution for final acceptance and closing final project costs for the Sageville Elementary School project as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve change order number five to Ports and Construction Incorporated on the Washington Middle School Multipurpose Room Addition Project in the increased amount of $110,998.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve change order number five to Ports and Construction Inc. on the Washington Middle School Multipurpose Room Addition Project in the increased amount of $110,998. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the following resolution for final acceptance and closing final project costs for the public improvement contract with Ports and Construction. Whereas on January 13, 2014, Dubuque Community School District entered into a construction contract with Ports and Construction of Dubuque, Iowa, contractor for the construction of certain public improvements generally described as the House Computer Lab Renovation Project. And whereas on August 12, 2013, Dubuque Community School District entered into a contract with Straka Johnson Architects PC, Architect, for architectural engineering design services associated with the above project. And whereas on March 8, 2014, Architect filed a certificate with Dubuque Community School District certifying that the contractor had substantially completed the construction of said public improvements in accordance with the terms and conditions of the contract and plans and specifications. Whereas the architect has now submitted subsequent report, change order, bonds, and pay application to Dubuque Community School District recommending that the project be accepted by the district as finally complete. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Dubuque Community School District, Section 1, that said reports and documents of the architect are hereby approved and adopted. Section 2, that said public improvement is hereby approved and accepted as having been fully completed in accordance with said plan specifications in form of contract. Section 3, that the total contract cost of the improvement yet payable under said contract with Ports and Construction is hereby determined to be $38,825.93. Section 4, that $38,825.93 of the total contract cost yet paid should be retained for a period of 30 days following the board's actions, this board's actions, to finally accept this public improvement project pursuant to the requirements of Iowa Code 573.14. If at the end of the 30-day period, claims are on file as provided, the Dubuque Community School District shall continue to retain from the unpaid funds a sum equal to double the total amount of all claims on file. The remaining balance of the unpaid fund, or if no claims are on file, the entire unpaid fund shall be released and paid to the contractor in accordance with Iowa law.
You need a drink.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt the resolution for final acceptance and closing final project costs for the public improvement contract with Ports and Construction for the House Computer Lab Renovation Project. I guess the good news is when these take that long to read, it either means we're starting them or we're finishing them. So this is good news that we're actually, for these two projects, putting a closure to them. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the following resolution approving construction contract certificate and insurance and bonds, be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Dubuque Community School District, Dubuque, Iowa, that the construction contract and bonds executed and insurance coverage for the senior high school stone repointing project as described in detail in the plans and specifications heretofore approved and which have been signed by the contractor be and the same are hereby approved and Board President is authorized to execute said contract on behalf of the district outlined as follows. Contractor, ByState Masonry Incorporated, date of contract, March 13, 2014, bond surety, Old Republic Surety Company, $125,200, date of bond, March 24, 2014.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt the resolution approving construction contract certificate of insurance and bonds for the senior high school stone reporting, repointing project as read. Any discussion?
Just that, you know, we read these motions very quickly, but rest assured that the tires are kicked properly, not only by staff, but everybody has this information, and they're brought back ahead of time, people review it, and there's also the Facility Support Services Committee, where there are lengthy discussions on any specific points that are brought up in the meeting. So sometimes I think when we go this fast, it can give the impression that we're a little rambunctious in how we approve millions of dollars getting spent, but that's certainly not the case. There's a lot of process that goes behind this, and certainly always glad to answer any questions specific to any citizens if questions would arise.
But that whole process doesn't take as long as it takes you to read the motion.
Not anymore.
Okay, all right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Tom. Mr. Callahury, you're going to present the quarterly budget report.
Just three things I wanna bring to your attention, and a couple of them are reminders. Looking at page 187 of your packet, beginning with the general fund expenditures for the year, you see the column of percent budget, 25.24 percent. That's what we have left to spend out of our general fund. We are three-quarters of the year, or way through the fiscal year, with only 25 percent of the year left, so they kind of match up, which is good. A couple reminders again on the management fund, you see only about a percent and a half left. That's because a majority of the expenditures in the management fund actually take place in July, when we pay for our insurance, and then the early retirement incentives that are paid to the teachers takes place in July. So a majority of that money is used that first month of the year. Then, the third thing is, you see there's a negative amount in the budget balance for the sales tax fund. That is because the Hempstead project and the Kennedy project are both in that number, and they will carry over into next year, and Hempstead will actually carry over into 2016. So the full projects are in this year's encumbrance, even though we won't spend all of those dollars.
All right. Any questions?
I move that the Board of Education approve the quarterly budget report as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the quarterly budget report as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Brings us to Educational Programs Policy Strategy Committee report, Ms. Ryan.
Long title for not much of a report. We did receive a, an update for, all of the school staff did a survey on the professional development, and we received a report on, very favorable. Everybody felt pretty favorable of the professional development that they were receiving, and very much looking forward to the professional development that they will be getting next year, and how it'll be much more consistent, and I asked the questions to making sure that we're gonna make, look at those professional development results and find out where our strengths and weaknesses are for professional development, because we are going to be held very much accountable to the professional development next year with the challenge, with the calendar change. So this will be done again next year and evaluated again. You wanna add that?
Absolutely. So as part of the strategic plan, or the forum we did in June, one of the things we committed to was looking thoroughly at professional development as has been delivered historically in the district and this year, to sort of set a baseline. That is imperative, as Ms. Ryan pointed out, that as we move forward with a calendar that allows for additional professional development time, that we're using that time wisely. And so while it was overall very favorable, there are certainly areas of growth. There are certainly things in there that we will learn from that will help us provide better professional development, as viewed by the teachers, and ultimately, obviously, we need to ask the audience, are we hitting the mark that we are aiming at? So that's why there's value with this survey, because it does put it right into their hands to say, you know, the good, the bad, the ugly, and sort of give us an opportunity to move forward with the planning for PD.
Anything else?
That's really about it.
You could read one of Tom's motions if you ever got tired, or...
No, I'm sure I'll have my turn sometime.
Thank you very much. Brings us to New Business.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the revised 2014-2015 school calendar as presented. Mr. Ryan Gans, can you explain?
Let's get a second before we...
A second.
Okay. So it's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt the revised 2014-15 school calendar as presented. Discussion?
So at the risk of making it seem like this is a bigger issue than it was, we did wanna bring this back to the board to have it officially approved, but at the calendar that we approved last time, there was an additional day added on to that. May 27, which is a Wednesday, should have been labeled a snow makeup day. Instead, it was labeled as a normal school day. So this is just the process by writing that. Good chance it'll be a school day either way, you know, with Iowa being what it is, but it is technically a snow makeup day, and that was reported wrong on the calendar that was approved by the board. So that's the only change, there's no philosophical or significant change, it's just one day was, my mistake, should have been a snow makeup day instead of...
Next meeting will be another day.
Student caught that.
It's a slippery slope.
It's a slippery slope.
Slippery slope.
I have a question regarding the, does it have to be in our calendar as far as the first semester ending at the holiday break?
It doesn't have to be in the calendar.
It does not have to be in the calendar.
But that is, that is the plan.
That is the plan. Is that going to be written in our calendar at all or not?
We will add, we add the trimesters, we've had all those things in there so people can see it from, parents see that, teachers see that as, but it is not actually part of the approved plan. But that's, that's a significant part that our secondary teachers really have asked for, for several years, so.
I think it's a great idea.
It certainly gives them, but it also gives our students an opportunity to really, truly take a break at the holidays without worrying about, well, I've got finals the three days after I get back or something along those lines. Or a teacher from assigning like the research paper, something like that.
A little slice of history here. The last time we changed, we revised, and this is, this is a very minor revision. The last time we changed the school calendar we'd already appointed resulted, there's Tammy back there laughing because that was 10 years ago and since then, the DEA has been represented. That was the shot heard around the world. Since then, the DEA has been to every single school board meeting to make sure we don't slip another quick one past them. Tammy has, this has caused Tammy hours off of her life that she will never recoup, but they're keeping an eye on us, so.
Well, it's pretty good we only make the mistake once every 10 years.
Once every 10 years.
Always great to have you here, Tammy.
And mine are both.
I'm tied with Tom's appearance on the board.
Seems to be. You connect the dots.
There's a pattern here.
There is a motion on the table. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the following resolution, whereas pursuant to Iowa Code section 279.104, the state of Iowa has granted school districts and non-public schools the ability to request a first day of school earlier than the mandated start date. And whereas the request is to be made upon a determination by the board that the later start date would have a significant negative educational impact. And whereas the board in consultation with its community has determined a later start date would have a significantly negative impact on the educational program due to the direct and indirect impact on student learning and student learning needs. More specifically, completion of the semester after winter break will require students to spend a week in January refreshing students' memories, effectively adding days of instruction, avoiding the delay of the end of school due to weather going into mid-June when students are significantly less likely to be learning than they are in late August, honoring the community's desires and needs in the calendar adopted. And whereas the board believes that student achievement first and foremost should drive all education policy decisions. Any alterations to the current school start date should have data showing how the later start date is more vital to the state of Iowa than the success of its students, its future. The decision on a school calendar should be made with that in mind as well as the recognition of the community's involvement and support of the calendar. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Dubuque Community School District, Dubuque, Iowa.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the resolution granting the school district the ability to request a first day of school earlier than the mandated start date as read. Any discussion? Stan, what is actually the mandated start date? What date is that?
After the Labor Day holiday. I think there are two school districts who actually don't request a waiver.
So 99% of the school districts in Iowa request this waiver.
Well, more than that because there are two out of the 340 districts, I think, whatever. But so, yeah, it's, this is just a step we have to take to have the start date that we've chosen for the calendar.
It's an example of local control, which is really nice to be able to see that we can set our calendar based on what we see as the needs to our students, which is huge for us to be able to have.
And is supported by the community.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education expel student 704766 from attending school in the Dubuque Community School District pursuant to contract and waiver of hearing signed on April 2, 2014.
My second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education expel student number 704766 from attending school in the Dubuque Community School District pursuant to contract and waiver of hearing signed on April 2, 2014.
So as it become our custom, when we have a student who commits a offense that is expellable in nature, I meet with the student, well, actually I have, I meet with the staff, the principal and the folks who do a background assessment of this individual, look at the totality of their disciplinary record and then meet with the family. And if possible, develop a contract by which a student have a reentry point, this one approximately a year from now, where if they meet certain requirements, personal goals as well as educational and restitution, we will recommend that they be readmitted to the school, to the school board at that point. So it gives them some proactive, progressive steps that they can take to overcome the offense that they've committed, I guess.
Great. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I move that the Board of Education excuse the seniors for making up six snow days in June. They'll be happy for that.
Be a hero.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education excuse seniors for making up six snow days in June.
Can Taylor Ryan be pulled off?
I think this Ryan needs to abstain, but I don't, I don't think so. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Jim just got emailed 15 graduation party invitations from various seniors.
Jim will be in the parking lot signing autographs and following tonight's event.
We were actually Twitter inviting, giving it on using.
Yeah.
Facebook.
Board member issues? Any from the table?
I was just going to bring up the point that when we had our, when we had the state folks in here this past week, I thought it was a really healthy conversation between us and them as we talked about the school board and the school board's role in, in working with the district. And the one, just real briefly, the one point that I thought that seemed to come across often in that conversation was the notion of being approachable, approachable for citizens and the fact that when people have concerns, they can come forward and catch any one of us and all of us through our involvements are out there, you know, listening to people. We try and listen. We never get it perfect, but we try awfully hard. I just thought that was, that was really nice for me. I've seen a lot of ebb and flow on the course of the board over time and to have a group like this that at least really acknowledges the need to be listening to the community and carefully representing the needs of the community is something that sounds so simple but isn't always so simple, so.
Well said.
All right. Any administrative issues?
Kind of piggyback, I know this has been said earlier, but last week was a pretty intensive opportunity for the Department of Ed, Education, as well as some other AEAs or AEA members and a few folks, or at least one person from another school district, to come in and look at how we do business in Dubuque. It is a huge data crunch. They ask for an awful lot of data to be provided to them and so it's many hours work for the staff and for the buildings. And as was mentioned earlier by Matt, I believe, tremendous commitment of time on Lynn's part and she does an expert job on pulling those things together and making those site visits run smoothly. When, when those teams aren't looking for data, when we're open and upfront about what our data is and where they can find it, it just makes for a better communication and tone. So worth repeating that Lynn did a tremendous job and the folks who are on the site visit would tell you that it runs as smoothly in Dubuque as it does anywhere in the state and better than most. So great job by Lynn.
Thank you, Lynn. Preview upcoming board meeting. Anything special in May?
Well, I don't believe it'll snow on the day of our May board meeting. And we will be discussing graduation and beginning to prepare for our end of the year June, report out on the strategic plan, those sorts of things. So it's hard to believe another school year is nearly in the books.